Okay, we're going to get started. Welcome to the January Hoboken Board of Education meeting. Ms. Good, can you please read the statement of compliance?
This meeting is being held in conformity with the Open Publics Meeting Act NJ SA 10:4-6. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on January 7, 2023. If any board member or a member of the public in attendance believes that the meeting is in violation of the Open Publics Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is recorded on video and will be broadcast by the board at a later date on CATV Channel 77 and Files Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on board docs which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of devices necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Please rise. The Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have the roll call, please, Ms. Good?
Ms. Catatuturi.
Here.
Mr. Delatorre.
Here.
Mr. Grana.
Here.
Ms. Connor.
Here.
Mr. Clubful.
Here.
Ms. McGurk.
Here.
Ms. Norwood.
Here.
Ms. Takarian.
Here.
Ms. Angley.
Here.
You have a call.
Okay, next we'll move on to the recognition portion of our meeting. And with that being said, I'll turn the meeting over to Ms. Rodriguez Gomez.
Hello, and welcome, esteemed members of our Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, administrators, faculty, community, students, and their special guests, their families. It is always such a joy to stand before you and introduce our talented principals as they take the podium to share detailed information and valuable anecdotes about the students being honored here tonight. This evening, we acknowledge and celebrate the hard work of our students as they are celebrated as the Students of the Month for the month of December. They have all worked so diligently and put in their greatest effort. They were driven to succeed, and their efforts have paid off. We are also very proud of each of you and can't wait to hear about your academic journey. As has been our process, we will begin with the Joseph F. Brant School, tonight being represented by Vice Principal Andrea De La Fave. She will then introduce the Connors Principal, Ms. Addy, and she will follow the same pattern introducing our next presenters, Vice Principals Lawrence, Principal Sorfine, and Principal Pica Pietra of Wallace, Hoboken Middle, and Hoboken High School respectively. Each will celebrate their school's selections and pause for a picture opportunity. Again, thank you for being with us here tonight, and with that, I would ask Vice Principal Andrea De La Fave to join me at the podium.
Good evening, everyone. I'm pleased to represent Joseph F. Brant School as we honor our December Student of the Month, Cooper Whitmore. Cooper, please join me at the podium. Congratulations to Cooper Whitmore, the Joseph F. Brant Elementary School Student of the Month for December 2022. Cooper was nominated by his fifth-grade teacher, Mrs. Gant, who is also here tonight. Hi, Ms. Gant. Mrs. Gant nominated Cooper based on academic progress, leadership, and responsibility that he has shown throughout the year. Cooper has approached this month's challenges with a growth mindset. He does not give up and is optimistic. He has great respect from adults and peers throughout the school. Cooper's great kindness and effort shine bright in December. He turns in his homework and classwork on time with effort, proving his growth in class. Cooper has a positive attitude towards adults and classmates as he works with them. He has great patience with others and is always trying to improve the environment of the room. He loves to make people laugh and enjoy the moment. Cooper tries to include everyone in activities and is always willing to help out other classmates. Cooper has been on time each day, and despite some absences, he's made up his work in a timely manner, showing his determination. He's a great leader representing our school. Mrs. Gant said the following quote from Maddie Richardson is a perfect encapsulation of Cooper. "Today is a new day with new opportunity to make your world a better place to be." Cooper absolutely takes the opportunity to make Brant a better place each day that he's in school. Cooper is an honor roll student and a member of the Brant Basketball Yellow Team, which made the semifinals in their league tournament. His positive attitude and kindness are great assets to his class, and his positive attitude is contagious and spreads throughout our school every day. Cooper's personal hobbies include drawing and building Legos. His favorite subjects are language arts and art. Cooper plays violin and saxophone in the Brant School Band and Orchestra, and he wants to be a video game producer when he grows up. When told he would receive this award, Cooper took the opportunity to recognize all of the opportunities available to him and said, "Power through school." We couldn't agree more, Cooper, and we have no doubts that as you continue to grow at school, so will your power to do whatever you set your mind to. Please join me in a round of applause for the Brant Elementary School Student of the Month, Cooper Whitmore. Not too awkward, right? Not too awkward, right? Forgot the most important part. There you go. I'd like to call Ms. Juliana Addy, Principal of Connors School, to the podium.
At this time, I would like to invite Soham Dixit up to the podium to receive his Student of the Month award. Soham Dixit was nominated for Student of the Month by his second-grade teacher, Ms. Rinaldi. Ms. Rinaldi shared that she is so tremendously proud of Soham. He is a shining example to all of his peers. He makes excellent choices both inside and outside of the classroom. Soham treats others with respect on a daily basis and is so in tune to all of his classmates' thoughts and feelings, well beyond his years. Filled with compassion, he often will ask his peers how they are feeling or how are they doing. If they look like they may be feeling sad or upset, he will always try to cheer them up. His level of integrity, honesty, reliability, and responsibility are tremendous. He is committed to putting forth a supreme level of effort in all of his classes and tries his best on everything he does. Soham is not afraid to ask questions or get clarification on a topic. He is very eager to learn more and always participates during class discussions or group work. With an extraordinary level of citizenship, he is always willing to lend a helping hand to his classmates or to Ms. Rinaldi. Soham knows that no act of kindness is ever wasted. Whenever a classroom task needs to be done, Ms. Rinaldi can always find Soham volunteering to help out a friend with their center work, pushing in a chair, or picking up a dropped pencil. When we asked Soham to tell us a little bit about himself and this honor, Soham shared that his favorite color is brick red. His favorite subject in school is math, especially fractions. He wanted to share that he is bilingual and can speak Hindi. He is a proud member of our John Hopkins CTY program, and he's planning on becoming a heart surgeon or a doctor in the future. Since Soham is such a great friend to his peers, it is not surprising that they had such nice things to share. Soham's friend Laney shared, "Soham is so smart and such a great friend, and he helps me whenever I ask him." His friend Noam shared that "My favorite thing to do with Soham is to solve math problems together." Oprah Winfrey says that "Our goal must be decency and respect for every human we encounter." Every teacher and student at Connors who has the privilege to get to know Soham is incredibly lucky. Soham, you are an outstanding example of our Connors Koala Six Pillars of Character with your trustworthiness, respect for others, responsibility, fairness, caring, and good citizenship. You are so very deserving of this honor, and you truly know what it means to be a Connors Koala. Soham, the effect you have on our school community is something you and your family should be very proud of. Congratulations, Soham. At this time, I'd like to call up Ms. Liz Lawrence, the Vice Principal of Wallace Elementary School.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome Brayden Torres to the podium. We are here tonight to recognize Brayden Torres, our Wallace School Student of the Month for December. Brayden is a fourth-grade scholar who was nominated by his teacher, Ms. Halcheck, in celebration of the many positive attributes Brayden has displayed this year. Roaring at Wallace seems to come natural to Brayden. This school year, he has shown exceptional effort, hard work, dedication, and perseverance. Yet, it is Brayden's kind heart, helpful demeanor, and empathetic spirit that make him extraordinary. During the day-to-day, I witnessed this firsthand as Brayden was helping a new student in his classroom adjust to the schedule. Brayden quite literally took the other student under his wing and served as a peer role model throughout the entire day. We are proud to call him our Student of the Month. When asked about Brayden, Ms. Halcheck was eager to share. Brayden is a pleasure to have in class and has been working very hard this year. He has shown an increased interest in reading, and he consistently shows effort in all academic activities. Ms. Halcheck went on to say that Brayden is incredibly sweet, kind, loving, and helpful. You can always count on him to make you smile, to cheer you up, or offer a hug. He is respectful toward all of the Wallace community and routinely sets a good example for his fellow Wildcats. Brayden's achievements this year has certainly not gone unnoticed. Academically, he earned second honor roll first marking period and is on track to do the same this quarter. His character was also celebrated at our academic pep rally where he earned the Golden Paw, an award recognizing students who roar at Wallace by demonstrating respect, open-mindedness, achievement, and responsibility. When asked about Brayden, his classmates echoed these attributes. They described him as nice, generous, funny, and someone who always likes to make people feel better. Paraprofessionals in his classroom added on by sharing that Brayden is both hardworking and humorous. Although Brayden is often reserved, his humor comes to life once you get to know him. He truly enjoys making people laugh. Brayden also loves his family and lights up every time he sees his little brother in the hallway. His favorite subjects are math, physical education, and art. And outside of school, he enjoys listening to music and loves playing sports. Brayden, thank you for being a leader in our school community and for always doing your best every day. We are so proud of you. Once again, please join me congratulating Brayden Torres, our Wallace School Student of the Month for December. Are you still proud of yourself? There is your certificate, so I'll let you hold it and let's take a picture, okay? Ready? Oh, look, this guy ready? I'm gonna give this to you too, okay? Hey, Brayden. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ryan Sorfine, Principal of the Hoboken Middle School.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, I would like to welcome to the podium Hoboken Middle School's December Student of the Month, Nora Block. Nora is a sixth-grade student at Hoboken Middle School and was nominated by her physical education and pre-AP teacher, Ms. Mendoza. Ms. Mendoza shared that Nora is an exemplary student. She is respectful at all times and enhances the learning environment with her motivating attitude to her fellow classmates. Along with Ms. Mendoza's nomination, the sixth-grade team equally shared their support for Nora's receive of this honor. Ms. Anderson shared that from the moment she met Nora, she demonstrated her willingness to take intellectual risks as well as go above and beyond the normal classroom expectations. Nora's persistence, dedication, and aptitude for learning immediately made her stand out. Along with her academic prowess, her kindness radiates through the halls on a daily basis. Additionally, Ms. Tuzayez, Ms. Gomez, and Ms. Van Zant could not be more proud of Nora and agree that Nora's energy is contagious and she is always willing to lend a hand to her classmates. As the Principal of Hoboken Middle School, I enjoy greeting the students as they come into school each morning and visiting classes throughout the day. I can always count on Nora to greet me with a smile and a friendly hello whenever we cross paths. It is obvious that Nora has made quite an impression with our staff and peers. We're quick to share those sentiments. One quote in particular stood out. Her friend Kate Marinello shares that Nora is very smart and an outgoing person who is always open to giving me a helping hand on her classwork. Nora always contributes to a positive classroom environment and always helps out her classmates and teachers. Nora is very deserving of a Student of the Month, and I don't know anyone better for this role. She is positive and kind to everyone she meets. She is selfless and kind-hearted, and I am so proud of her and proud to be her friend. In her spare time, Nora enjoys playing sports, hanging out with her friends, and spending time with her pets. Nora's favorite subject in school is math and would love to pursue a career in finance. She also has aspirations to attend an Ivy League school or Penn State University just like her mom. When we asked Nora how she felt about receiving this honor, she replied, "I feel honored to be chosen by all my teachers and peers as Student of the Month. I will use this to motivate myself and others to work hard for the rest of the school year." We know you will, Nora. We are so proud of Nora, and I am confident that she will continue to lead Hoboken Middle School with tiger pride. Please join me in congratulating Hoboken Middle School's Student of the Month, Nora Block. At this time, I would like to welcome to the podium the Principal of Hoboken High School, Ms. Pica Pietra.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to welcome Tasha Fu, Hoboken High School's Student of the Month. This girl must have something pretty special. It is not often that we are celebrating freshmen as overall Students of the Month. That's pretty well done, Tasha. I must admit, I knew she was going to be a great one, as I had her sister Sheila, who now attends Middlebury College, so I was thrilled when I met Tasha. Tasha demonstrates a great maturity that is not always realized as a freshman. Every day, she enters the building with a smile and greets Mr. Ponce, Mr. Williams, and me with a warm good morning. If you pass her in the hall, she always greets you and has a warmness to her that is absolutely brilliant. A smile is always on her face. Teachers have shared that Tasha is exceptionally hardworking, attentive, polite, and always communicates with her teachers. She excels at everything she puts her mind to. I feel like Mr. Debonato summed it up for everyone. In world history, AP class, Tasha has shown a commitment to learning at the highest level. Tasha is positive, insightful, reflective, and supportive of her fellow classmates. She is the first one to enter the classroom and the last to leave. She routinely participates in class and displays a thirst for knowledge. Her overall academic growth has been inspiring to the students around her. During activities for the Hoboken High School Debate Club, Tasha has displayed the characteristics of a true leader. She has shown a high competitive spirit and embodies the concept of teamwork to a great extent. She shows fearlessness in the face of academic adversity and is not afraid to stand up and speak her mind in front of large academic groups or during intense academic competition. She is also involved in the student government and math team. I asked this lovely young woman a few questions, and these were her responses. I asked best experience. She said her best experience this year was definitely the student government and debate program, especially all the amazing people I've met. Favorite class? Mr. D's AP, world history. She loves them all, but if she had to choose one, that would be it. She enjoys it because she has learned so many useful skills that transfer to her other classes. What makes her so successful? She says it's her passion, interests, and challenging herself to learn new things. Dream college and major? She hasn't really decided on any of that yet, but she definitely knows she wants to major in studio art. Her closest friends? Her family. And they would describe her as an enthusiastic learner. We agree, Tasha, and keep that enthusiasm going because it is contagious. Congratulations. Well done. Well done.
Keep up the great work, and we can't wait to see you again in the future. Next, we will welcome our high school representative from the student government.
My name is Naomi Cook. I am the Hoboken High School Student Government Board Representative. It is an honor to speak with you this evening. Happy New Year. This past month, we have had class council meetings, holiday movie pajama jam, and organizational meetings. Charity volleyball game. The student government, in conjunction with the Bayonne High School Student Council, will be playing a pair of charity volleyball games for charity. Hoboken High School will host in February, and Bayonne High School will host in March. The Hoboken game will be played on February 3 at 6:00 PM in the Hoboken High School gym. The cost of the event is $3 for adults and $2 for kids. The Hoboken High School Student Government has chosen to play for the Hoboken Public Education Foundation. Red Wings basketball. Our Red Wings basketball boys' basketball team is 6-3 on the season off their recent win over Weehawken High School. In addition, senior Jesse Erlane leads the county in scoring and rebounds, and senior Joel Lopez leads the county in assists. The girls' basketball team is 4-4 on the season and has won three games in a row with their recent victory over Roseell Park, 35-24. Hoboken High School ice hockey. The Hoboken High School Weehawken High School ice hockey team won their second game of the season defeating Bayonne High School 10-0 yesterday at Richard Corpy Ice Rink. The standout performances by Luca Matuo, Miles Angley, Ryan Womack led the Red Wings to victory. Hoboken High School wrestling. The Hoboken High School wrestling team had a strong individual showing this weekend. Sophomore Jonas Eckhart won 5-0. Not only did he go 5-0, but he is currently setting the Hoboken Wrestling win record. Senior captain Glenn Galopon went 4-1 alongside setting the school record in fastest pin at 10 seconds. Freshman Shane Barabena went 5-0 this weekend. Sophomore Brandon Otero went 3-2 this weekend and also picked up his first varsity win in which he went 3-0 on Saturday. Returning sophomore Noah Reyes picked up his first win of the season on Saturday, and junior Benny Sakala picked up his first win on Friday night. Hoboken Wrestling is head coached by Shane Satanic and his assistant Elmer Fajardo. National Honor Society. The National Honor Society led the effort to make holiday cards for senior citizens who receive meals on wheels. We, along with many other members of our student community, made over 80 cards and dropped them off at the senior center during the last week before the break. The Red Wing Book Club has restarted, and we have partnered with the Cliffside Park High School. They're reading the same book as our club members, All That's Left in the World by Eric J. Brown, about two teens navigating a post-pandemic world. We are meeting with them monthly on Zoom and meeting on our own between these discussions. Hoboken Public District, Fine Arts, Fine and Performing Arts. Statewide Thesbian Competition. On Saturday, January 8, Hoboken High School's Thesbian Competition Team went to Robinsville High School in Trenton to participate in the New Jersey Thespians Festival. There were 41 schools with over 900 students in attendance. Our students shine bright in taking home first place in the Chapter Select One Act Play category for the second year in a row. This means that we will be in our entire state's representative at the International Thespians Festival earning a spot to perform the play on the main stage in front of the entire festival. It is a huge honor as we are state theater champions. Additionally, the Superior Medals won mean that students received a perfect score on a rubric by multiple adjudicators and now get to compete with that same piece at the International Thespians Festival at Indiana University Bloomington. It is there that our students will try to win national recognition as being a part of the best high school theater from around the world. We brought 14 students to the NJ Thespians Festival, and all 14 won an award allowing them to compete and/or perform at the International Thespians Festival. Danielle Miller, Supervisor of Fine and Performing Arts, would like to thank Derek Kinnear, High School Theater Director, and Ms. Gina Rotandi, Elementary School Theater Director, for their time, dedication, and talents to our students. Awards won. First place, Chapter Select One Act Play for a Know Your Role written by Brandi Owinski, Kendall McDonough, Naomi Cook, Daniel Weintraub, Arcadio Torres, Anthony Barahona, Lucas Daly, Gabriel Rivas, Miguel Kablein, Mabel Bliski-Villa Vicencio, Alana Rivas, Ridi Demani, Haley Benway, Shar Wojsowski, and Sihana Allah. Haley Benway also won third place for Best Supporting Actress for her monologue in this play. Superior Medal Duet Acting, Kendall McDonough and Mabel Bliski-Villa Vicencio. Superior Medal Solo Musical Theater, Haley Benway. Superior Medal Group Musical Theater for Snuff the Girl from Urantown. Kendall McDonough, Naomi Cook, Daniel Weintraub, Arcadio Torres, Anthony Barahona, Lucas Daly, Gabriel Rivas, Miguel Kablein, Mabel Bliski-Villa Vicencio, Alana Rivas, Ridi Demani, Haley Benway, and Shar Wojsowski, and Sihana Allah. Superior Medal Contrasting Monologue, Lucas Daly. And finally, to round out this report, our monthly luncheon with Hoboken High School Administration was held on Monday, January 23, 2023, at 12:15 PM. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak, and thank you for always supporting our student government at Hoboken High School, and we look forward to seeing you at our events. Go Red Wings!
Thank you, Naomi. It's always great to hear what's happening at Hoboken High School. There's certainly a lot going on, and congratulations to you, Naomi, for your recognition. Next, we'll have the Hoboken Middle School Student Representative.
Good evening, esteemed members of the Hoboken Board of Education, faculty, staff, parents, peers, and all others in attendance tonight. My name is Olivia Dunn. I am here representing Hoboken Middle School. I am here to share all the exciting things that happened at Hoboken Middle School during December. The HMS Student Council kicked off their winter coat drive, which will support those in need at the Hoboken Homeless Shelter. We are still accepting any and all new gently-used coats of all sizes. The students at Hoboken HMS participated in our second PGP Personal Growth Program a day of the year in which students continue to explore powerful and meaningful topics which allowed them the space to discuss the themes like health and wellness, college and/or career exploration. and/or career exploration, growth mindset and personal development, and global schools, education for substantial development. During the month of December, our Passport to Learning Clubs had a lot of fun things going on. The golf club members worked on putting, chipping, and how to swing a golf club while also perfecting their golf's course etiquette and how they're supposed to conduct themselves on the golf course. Members of the tennis club learned their forehand, backhand, and the basics of how to serve a volley. They also began double games. HMS GSA was very excited to unbox their GLSEN Rainbow Library, which is an innovative which carefully curates inclusive book sets. GLSEN is an organization dedicated to ensuring the safety and growth of LGBTQ+ youth. The Rock Climbing Club, Kick Boxing Club, and Passport Printmaking all worked on perfecting some already learned skills and practiced some new ones. From bouldering to shadow boxing to printing their very first line of cuts, the members of all these clubs have been working hard to broaden their horizons. The academic team competed in their second National Current Events League meet of the year. This competition tested students on their knowledge of current events between October 7 and December 8 of this year. Our HMS Girls and Boys Basketball Teams began practicing during the month of December and are clawing at the courts in assentuated of this year's basketball season. Go Tigers! The Hoboken Middle School Theater Department attended a play, A Little Shakespeare, at Two River Theater in Red Bank, New Jersey on Friday, December 9. This allowed students to get assimilated to the language of Shakespeare. For many of our students, it was the first time they have seen or heard a Shakespeare play. On January 7, Hoboken High School thespians Competition Team and Hoboken Middle School Junior Thespians attended the speech and Theater Association of New Jersey Governors Awards and Arts Education Theater Competition held at Montclair State University. There were 25 schools with over 500 students in attendance. While it is 7th through 12th grade competition, our middle school was the only middle school present. We are so proud of our junior thespians as it was all their first times at a theater competition. It is important to point out that all students, regardless of age, were competing against each other in numerous categories. Of our award-winning band and string musicians participated in the winter concert, which was put on at Hoboken High School and played all of the holiday classics. We also enjoyed celebrating the holiday season during the HMS Spirit Week. Students, faculty, and staff members participated in different themed days throughout the week, such as pajama day, candy cane day, holiday headwear day, ugly holiday sweater day, and our very own HMS New Year's Rockin' Eve. We also had a school-wide classroom door decorating competition, in which students put their creativity to the test by creating unique and festive holiday-themed door masterpieces. Finally, our next PTO and parent information session will be on January 11 and will be held at the middle school from 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Thank you again for this opportunity to speak with you today. We're looking forward to next month's meeting.
Thank you, Olivia. That was great. We love having you come speak to us and sharing what's happening at Hoboken Middle School. Thank you. Okay, so next, we will turn the meeting over to Dr. Johnson for her superintendent's report.
Okay, so my superintendent's report is rather brief. I just want to announce a few important dates, also announce a grant application that we're going to be submitting, and provide you with an update regarding safety and security measure that we recently took in the district. On January 12 and 13, our Johns Hopkins CTY gifted and talented students will be presenting their Semester One portfolios at both Brant and Wallace Elementary Schools. Connors Elementary students presented their portfolios last week. On Tuesday, January 24, at 6:30 PM in the Hoboken High School Auditorium, our Special Education Parent Advisory Group will be hosting a workshop for parents on childhood anxiety. At this time of the school year, we always begin to prepare for next year's kindergarten class, and so I would like the board and the community to know that on Wednesday, February 1, we will be issuing our kindergarten survey. That survey gives us the opportunity to get a pulse on approximately how many students we will be expecting to register with us from our pre-K4 program into our kindergarten program. We will then host information sessions on Thursday, February 9, Wednesday, February 15, and Tuesday, February 21. Two of those sessions will be virtual, one will be in person, and we will vary the times between 6:30 in the evening for one virtual and one in person, and at 9 o'clock in the morning for another virtual session. And then on Friday, February 24, we will be issuing our kindergarten placement letters. On Sunday, February 5, our district is going to be hosting our ELA Games and Family Learning Convention. For those of you who attended the math convention in December, you have a little bit of an idea of what we actually did at that convention. But for all families that participated, they came to the convention, they were provided with a tote bag with a series of games, and our very talented teachers staffed different classrooms and taught not only our students but also their families different games that they could play at home. So we're extremely excited to be offering the same type of activity in the area of language arts literacy, and we thank the Hoboken Public Education Foundation for funding both of those learning conventions. Also, mark your calendars for Hoboken High School's four upcoming information sessions. Ms. Pica Pietra and her staff have identified four dates that they would like to host families to learn more about Hoboken High School, even after our showcase of excellence in the beginning of the school year. So on January 12, February 9, March 9, and April 20, we give the community the opportunity and middle school families the opportunity to learn more about Hoboken High School's academic programs, co- and extracurricular programs, and to meet some of the staff members and administrative team. I would also like to inform the board and the community that on tonight's board agenda, we have a grant that we are asking approval from the Board of Ed to submit. This is a grant to the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs for local recreational improvement. Our intent is to apply for and potentially utilize that grant if we receive the funding for up to $100,000 for pool upgrades at Hoboken High School. And finally, our maintenance department and our technology staff members worked diligently over the winter break with a vendor to install equipment that was necessary for our district to comply with Alyssa's Law. This law requires that all school districts in New Jersey install mechanisms for direct contact with local police departments, so in our case with the Hoboken Police Department, in times of either a security breach or potentially an active shooter drill that we may be having or some other sort of security situation. The equipment includes panic buttons, lights, and sirens that are located both on the inside of the school and the lights and sirens on the outside of the school. This is a law that was passed in the state of New Jersey. All school districts and schools are required to comply, and I'm happy to say that the Hoboken Public School District, the system will be up and running, most likely no later than early February. All of our equipment is in. We're just waiting for some wiring to take place as well. And that's all I have for this evening.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Johnson. Before we begin the business portion of our meeting, we'll just take a minute if any family needs to leave, go home, do some homework, get to bed, and then we will resume the meeting for the business portion. Okay, looks like everybody who was going to leave left, so we all... Okay, we will start with committee reports, and first we'll go to Mr. Clubfall for curriculum.
Thank you. The Curriculum Committee met on Friday, January 6. Attending were Ms. Katamatory, Mr. Rania, Ms. Norwood, Dr. Johnson, and myself. While there are no curriculum items on tonight's agenda, we did review a lot of things, and all of them good, so bear with me for a couple minutes. Programming for this year's K-8 Leap Summer Camp will be broadened to include additional recreational activities in addition to the academic enrichment aspects. The program significantly is also being reconfigured. Instead of a single-day session, families will now have the option of a morning, an afternoon, or combined full-day camps with lunch being served to children attending the all-day. A new initiative, the Urban Farming Institute, is an after-school program offered to students in grades 4 and 5 who are willing to get their hands dirty, I'm told. It begins next month. Students will be introduced to the basic science and societal impacts of horticulture. The program will be conducted at the high school in a dedicated room that will house vertical hydroponic equipment. This elementary school initiative complements the existing middle school River Explorers Institute and the high school's hydroponic program, the idea being that one will lead to the other to the other, and students will get a complete multi-year experience. As part of its ongoing review of its core content curriculum, the district has selected Study Sync ELA for the middle schools, which will be implemented next year. Students will use actual novels as opposed to textbooks and online resources to explore classic and contemporary literature. I like this one. The state has at last completed the final Instruction and Program section of the NJ CUSAC. CUSAC stands for Quality Single Accountability Continuum, which is the every-three-year performance review of all districts done by the state. The Hoboken District has, for the third consecutive year, achieved high-performing district status. We did talk about the ELA Family Game Night, but Dr. Johnson touched on that. The high school will host the PSAT Interpretation Night for Parents and Guardians next week. Dr. Johnson reminded the committee that the district is a little uncommon in that all students at the high school are encouraged to take the PSAT and that the district covers their fee in order to remove any economic barrier to student participation. Importantly, the Department of Education recently released data that showed our 9th grade students, the only grade that the state tabulates and compares, outperformed the statewide average scores. I would say thank you, but it wasn't me, it was the 9th grade students. And finally, Dr. Johnson reported, this is interesting, that Governor Murphy signed a bill recently requiring the New Jersey Department of Education to create guidelines on media and information literacy for all K-12 students. It doesn't have an immediate impact. The next step is for the Commissioner of Education to create a committee to draft learning standards that will teach students how to differentiate fact and opinion, use libraries, resources to find scholarly articles, and understand economic, social, and legal factors related to the use of information. It'll be probably at least a year before those guidelines are issued and then it has any impact on curriculum, but that is interesting will be coming. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clubfall. I just want to add one thing. There is one item to vote on in curriculum, which was subsequently moved from governance to curriculum on the agenda, so just to note.
Oh, field trips.
Okay, moving on to, where are we going next? Facilities. Ms. McGurk.
Good evening. The Facilities Committee met virtually on Friday, January 6 at 2:00 PM. In attendance were Superintendent Dr. Johnson, Mr. Callagie, Ms. Katamatory, Mr. Delatorre, Ms. Kanna, and myself. There are two items on this evening's agenda, and we recommend both for board approval. The first is the approval of the fire and safety drills from the month of December, and the second is a facilities use request from Hive Athletics. Hive has requested the use of the gymnasium at Connors Elementary for Wednesday and Thursday evenings for seven weeks, starting this week through the end of February. They will be using the space for a co-ed dodgeball league. The committee also discussed the following items that are not on this evening's agenda. The light fixtures in the weight room at the stadium have been replaced. And over the break, as Dr. Johnson mentioned, the bulk of the work has been done to bring the district into compliance with Alyssa's Law. And that's my report. Good evening.
Thank you. Finance, Mr. Delatorre.
Finance Committee met on Friday, January 6. In attendance were Ms. Good, Ms. Lopez, Ms. Kanna, Ms. McGurk, and Ms. Angley. All agenda items were discussed, and we recommend all for approval. The board would like to extend its appreciation to the Columbia Press Group for their donation of $750 for the Hoboken High School Debate Program. Your donation is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Governance, Ms. Takarian.
Hi, good evening. The Governance and Personnel Committee met on Monday, January 9. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Katamatory, Mr. Clubfall, Ms. Norwood, and myself. The committee discussed all agenda items, and we recommend all for approval. As is in terms of the Governance and Personnel Agenda items, as is typical throughout the school year, you'll see a number of agenda items for transfers, appointments, resignations, et cetera, of teachers and other staff. This includes power professionals, teachers, substitute, co-curricular advisors, coaches, district family, and Hoboken High School events, and district musical staff. A few of note, approval of staff for the district musical SpongeBob, the musical. We're excited to have that musical coming to us in May this year. District musical staff are a combination of existing district staff in various roles as well as non-district staff, professionals like choreographers, lighting designers, seamstresses, et cetera. We're lucky to have so many talented individuals, both within and outside the district, who work with our district's productions year after year. So we're excited for SpongeBob coming this spring. Approval for staff for Night at the Nest for the 2022-2023 school year. I think that Dr. Johnson has alluded to this program before, but I thought it was worth pointing out. Night at the Nest is a program at Hoboken High School on select Friday or Saturday nights, where students can come in for both open gym or organized events like arts and crafts nights, dance, and DJ experiences. The program is growing in popularity and attendance as a fun and safe night out for our high school students. As Mr. Clubfall talked a little bit about, we're approving the coordinators for the K-5 Urban Farming and Hydroponics-Aquaponics program. That program will be launching this year for K-5 students and is modeled after the Middle School Riverkeepers program. We're really excited to add that option for our elementary students, and it will be hosted in the Hydroponics and Aquaponics Lab at Hoboken High School. You will note on the, or may note on the agenda, approval of substitute teacher pay increases. As the market for substitute teachers has become much tighter in recent years, we have suffered from shortages of high-quality substitutes. So therefore, we've adjusted our pay schedule to be more competitive with neighboring districts, allowing us to increase our pool of substitutes and reducing reliance on our teachers to cover classrooms and give up their prep times. So we're excited for that to go into place. And then, as usual, there are agenda items for the approval of a array of valuable field trips and workshops, including the highly anticipated School Without Walls trip to Galapagos in the spring, as well as museum trips, theater outing, band competition. So many exciting personal growth and learning opportunities for our students. Additionally, in the Policy section of the agenda, there's the first reading of several policies updated, updates. The policies, which are all related to district security, have been updated in accordance with New Jersey regulation in order to keep the specifics of the policies confidential from the general public, improving the safety and security of our school communities. And that is it for my report for tonight.
Thank you. And Wellness, Mr. Delatorre. And wellness, Mr. Delatorre.
The Wellness Committee met on Friday, January 6th. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Angley, Ms. Norwood, Mr. Grania, and myself. There are no wellness items on the January agenda. However, I would like to share the following. Due to growing interest from current eighth graders at Hoboken Middle School, Hoboken High School will be launching a dance team in 2023. The team will be an offshoot of the Theater Department. Hoboken's own Studio L will be volunteering to assist setting up the program. An interest meeting will be held this month with auditions happening in March. Also for 2023, Hoboken High School is looking to introduce a fencing cooperative with Weehawken High School. Our athletic director, Jack Baker, gauged the Hoboken High School student body and found significant interest. Exciting news for sure, and more information to come in the weeks ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a quick report. I wanted to address some questions that we got through public comments at last week's reorganizational meeting. There was a question about masking. The administration closely monitors absences due to illness in our schools as well as case levels throughout the city. This topic was discussed between the Wellness Committee and the administration, and the board does not see a need to institute a masking policy at this time. The district continues to operate on the basis of letting our families choose what is best for their child from a masking perspective while keeping the health and safety of our school community in mind. Another question we got was with regard to live broadcasting of board meetings. This is a topic that has come up and that the board will revisit. With all decisions that the board makes, we need to first consider the impact our actions will have on the children of the Hoboken Public School District. With that being said, all Board of Education meetings are recorded and posted to the district's YouTube channel the day after each board meeting. Question about proposed new high school. The board learned a great deal from last year's January 2022 referendum. We have subsequently held many community roundtables to engage the public, inform them on important topics such as budget, current facilities, programs, et cetera. The board has said before, and will say again, that we will not be making any decisions about a new plan until the public is engaged and their input is taken. The district's enrollment growth is real, space remains an issue, and we have buildings that are over 100 years old. While there is no plan for a new school to be put up for referendum at this time, the district continues to explore space for our early childhood classrooms. Just this year, we moved four preschool classrooms to the Jubilee Center to free up space in our elementary schools. In addition, the district will look to explore and advocate for funding to assist the community in financing new educational space, whatever that may look like. And now, we will move on to public comments on agenda items.
Ms. Waiters?
I'm going to read my statement that I've been reading, so just bear with me for one minute, Ms. Waiters. Just a reminder before we open for public comments. Over the years and most recently, the board has been asked why it does not prohibit or stop comments about school district employees from individuals who speak during the public comment portion of the meeting. The short answer is that the law prevents the board from censoring comments made about district personnel. The board does not condone, nor is the board a party to comments as such. However, just because a speaker may have the right to say what he or she feels, it does not absolve a speaker from liability for any defamatory comments that an employee may bring against the speaker. Should speakers say something that subjects them to a civil suit, the responsibility falls squarely on the speaker and not on the board. I also want to remind speakers of board policy. Please state your name, municipality of residence, and business affiliation, if any. Speakers are allowed five minutes, and we will quietly motion with 30 seconds left. Please address all comments to the chair. Board policy states that the board welcomes comments on matters of interest to the board, but this is not an opportunity for dialogue or debate between speakers and board members or the superintendent. With that being said, you have five minutes.
Patricia Waiters, I'm well aware of your comments, I mean, your introduction to the public portion. I'm well aware of policy, and again, what comes around goes around. The same respect that you want from members of the public, I respect for the same. Yes, I did have an opportunity in the past to debate with my opponents to sit up there, so it's kind of hard to refrain from going back and forth, but I will respect you tonight as Madam Chair and your government body as a whole, okay? And I will be held solely accountable for everything that come out of my mouth. Thank you. With that being said, on item number on the agenda. The superintendent, basically, I fold the page down right after she spoke on it with respect to the drill for the, well, first, let's look at the one on facilities. 12.01, I just want to compare the difference with the safety drill of a fire, the fire drills and safety drill. Those reports, those reports, that's not public information, is it? Those reports? Because tonight, the drills that you asking about for the, the school drills? The action drills? And that's first reading, I understand that this is saying policy, so it's not really basically saying drills, but I wrote it in, active drills? This bomb threats, lockdown procedures, and active shooters procedures, you asking for policies, right? Not drills. This is not a drill. It's going to be policies.
Those are policies.
Okay, thank you. I just want to distinguish the two.
They're recognitions of the regulations of the policy.
That's what you asking for. So it's only first reading, so we're going to get more clarification by the time the second reading to see actually these drills where they're being taken place, there's not going to be in the facilities.
No.
All right.
Yeah.
I mean, because these are the questions I'm getting. I mean, she, Dr. Johnson, I'm sorry, the superintendent explained it, but it's still not clarified.
Go ahead. Yeah. Quickly explain. So there's two different things that are on the agenda. One is the approval of the fire and safety drill reports. So every single month, the schools are required to do a certain number of safety drills, and when they do those drills, they must record them and submit them to the business office. The business office keeps those reports, and then we have to approve the fact that we have done the drills. Also, on this agenda are three different regulations, one for the lockdown drill, one for, I think it's bomb threat, and something else. Basically, every district has policies for each of those drills, and then they have a series of regulations. The regulations are kind of the, like, process behind the policy. What has happened with those regulations is the overall state policy manual organization has moved school districts away from putting process for those safety drills out to the public. And basically, what they've said is those processes need to be housed in a district's safety plan, meaning that a district is no longer putting in a policy manual or regulations what steps would be taken if by some chance there were...
This happened.
Yeah. So they've basically said it goes into a confidential safety and security plan that is reviewed with the police department, the county sheriff's office, things like that.
So the answer is no, the public don't get it. I'm just speaking on a perspective of a former officer and the active drill, physical active drill versus policy. Thank you, that clarified it 100%. Thank you so much. And with the bullying policy on page, not, page 1123, 9.15, these numbers for the bullying, intimidation, and the reports, does this include staff members and employees, or is this just students? The approval of harassment, intimidation, and bullying?
So technically, the law for HIB is student to student or any situation that involves a student?
Okay, just only students, not the district, not the employees, not, okay. And with the grant too, that's it. When you said the facilities for that grant, the community, that ain't a development block grant, that's just a community. All right, with the community grant for summer programs, will that, is it just fixing up the facility, or will summer programs be included? Hopefully, air conditioners included in that? For the bike, because I participate with the bikes a little for the special needs, and everything is fine besides that big fan, so I hope that's part of it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, are you corporation counsel? I mean, you counsel for Mr. Gagliardi?
David Disso, I'm filling in for Mr. Gagliardi.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
Okay, next, we will move on to consent agenda. Is there a motion? Motion. Can we take the roll call, please?
Ms. Katamatori?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Mr. Grana?
Yes.
Ms. Kana?
Yes.
Mr. Clubfall?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
I abstain from items 6.01, 7.01, 10.01, 10.02, and 10.03, and vote yes on the remainder.
Ms. Takarian?
Yes.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, and now we will move to public comments on both agenda and non-agenda items.
All right, this is open public comments, so I got a few questions for a few people. Just, MLDA-K 2023 falls on the 16th, which is a Monday. I received a call from Nora DiBernato from constituency service in Mayor Balla's office. I don't know if the Board of Ed have anything planned, so that's what I'm asking tonight. She gave me a time for 11 o'clock on Friday. I hope we could do better, because every, it seemed like I go do this every year with Martin Luther King's birthday, two and three days before, just to throw something together. I find in my heart and in my opinion, even then, other than these other two other people that told me to say this on the record, this is my opinion, it's like a disrespect. Martin Luther King, and then going on 55 years, this one is the 50th year, I'm sorry, this is like huge to me, and a lot of other people too that I try to advocate for. And what's been, when we seen the George Floyd all around the world, celebrated and marched, and people came out to let our voices be heard, I would think the Martin Luther King Day would be respected a little more and better than it's been in the past, and it's not about running up there 10 minutes to 11 to raise the flag. And I shared that with Nora, and I told her I will be reaching out to the Board of Ed and putting this on the record, because she said we're going to do something bigger after this coming Friday, for everybody that's watching, this coming Friday at 11 o'clock at City Hall to raise the flag for Martin Luther King's birthday. And I'm anticipating, I wanted to have some type of dino or something coming for Black History Month, which his birthday follows right into Black History Month. So if you have anything in mind, any of the board members, please keep in mind that you are representing all the people of Hoboken. In spite of that dirty election and those horrible flyers, you are here to represent all the people. And this is when my job get hard, when I got to stand up here and ask you to please reach out to the black and brown people that live in this community for years. Let us know that a day like this, that means so much to us, count, please. My information is the same, y'all, all have my email at election time, it's the same. And just from somebody else, just memo to public, they just want to know, if you learn more about us and what we have experienced and impacted, it'll go further. We will go a long way into changing instead of seeing the same thing every year with the attempt to whitewash Martin Luther King Day. Here's a few scenarios that they lived here, a lot of people lived here like me since the 50s and 60s. They mentioned that the charter school will march down Washington Street. Every Martin Luther King Day, that slowly disappeared, you don't see it no more. The celebrations only turns political. You go to a church, you see every politician in there, and it's about politics instead of the focus on Martin Luther King and changing his dream to make it alive, especially seeing all of the racism that's happening today with the mudslinging, and then you see the same politicians at his events. So we hope that Hoboken can change it up a little bit and make history by learning what we have encountered as individual, learning what we have encountered, so knowing better, you can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rodriguez Gomez, would you be able to share with the board and with the community what the district has planned for Martin Luther King Day?
Yes, very quickly. Director Steve Dickerson and I have worked closely to organize a district-wide day of service. He shared really critical and informative, comprehensive information with all of the schools regarding what the day of service might look like at all of the schools. He has also shared a litany of very informative resources to drive classroom instruction. All of those are something, Ms. Waiters, that I'm happy to share with you at a later time. Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.